Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 14, 2020 Board of Trustees Meeting. Will everyone please join me in the pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
One nation. Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Mayor Luise.
Present. And good evening, everyone. We're back after our summer vacation. Hope everyone had a safe and enjoyable summer. And we're going to begin tonight's meeting. We have two appointments to make. Appointment number one is appointing Gian, Paolo, and Audi. I'm sorry if I butchered that name to the...
Gianpaolo. Gianpaolo.
Gianpaolo. I know they call him JP for short, but Gianpaolo. And I'll put the Italian inflection on that. To the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee, to the unexpired term of James Rydel, which is expiring April 2021. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. And I would just like to welcome Gianpaolo to the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee. And I also thank James Rydel for his service on this committee. And I wish him well in his future endeavors. Our second appointment is...
Let me do vocal. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor.
In favor. And I'll bring us to our second appointment, which is reappointing Mimi Sanchez to the Tuckahoe Library Board for a term to expire April 2025. Do I have a motion, please?
No motion. Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor also. And again, I thank Ms. Sanchez for her commitment to the library board.
Greg, may I also elaborate regarding Mimi?
Please.
Something from Ginger. The board president in the library asked me to inform everyone that Mimi Sanchez has been a library board member since August 2017. She fulfilled Kathleen Skinner's position when she resigned from the board. Mimi has been a real asset, volunteering many hours of time. She's a champion of getting our local merchants to donate gifts for the library's annual fundraiser. She completes the monthly reviews and approves the library vouchers and is always willing to lend a hand when asked. Mimi's creative thinker, who cares about the success of the library very much. So, thank you, Mimi. Your service.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight. However, we do have a public hearing, which has been open since July. And that public hearing is the continuation to consider a proposed local law amending Chapter 10 of the Village Code, garbage, trash, and refuge. Modifications include the elimination of rear yard sanitation collection and elimination of the fall curb loosely pickup. So, as I said, this public hearing has been open since July. We have received numerous comments via Zoom and via email concerning this. So, again, this hearing is open. Anyone on the board wish to comment on this at this time?
Wow, Resident Evil. That's kind of scary.
Okay, I mean, as I said, this was something that we have been talking about. I know that one of the things that the board has discussed in that two-month span, along with the superintendent, Mr. DiMarco, because of the public's reaction to the rear yard sanitation collection possibly being eliminated, we really discussed it and we listened to what the residents had to say about that and we had some very good discussions about that. And it's my understanding that we will not be eliminating rear yard sanitation pickup at this time. But the elimination of the fall curb loose leaf pickup is still a very active conversation that we have been having. And it's something that this board, I will speak for myself. I agree with that elimination of that type of loose leaf pickup.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, please?
Please.
Yes. Hi, Mary O'Donnell. I would just like to make a few comments, please. First of all, I'm really pleased that the Board of Trustees has listened to the residents who commented in July. I was one of them. And I was particularly pleased to find out and have it confirmed that there is within the Village Code a provision that says from the pathway or the driveway, sanitation workers will not, or should not, or do not have to, rather, pick up the sanitation. So, I think that was really important because it really makes whole sanitation workers, which we all agree is really important. And just along those lines, I would like to suggest, and you probably already are doing this, but, you know, in November, before the cold weather really hits and the snow and the ice hits, just to send out a reminder to residents saying, "This is a provision in the code." And let them know so that there's no confusion and they'll, you know, they'll understand. So, I think that's important. The other issue that I wanted to address is that we also talked about in July, the importance of efficiency. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you obviously advocated, we all advocated, would like to see curbside pickup of food scraps. And I know we talked about it in July, that perhaps we... One way of accomplishing that important goal would be to eliminate the rear yard. But I'm really glad to see that and hear that that's not, you know, an either/or issue. And I would also like to say that I did notice that in Scarsdale, they do both. They do rear yard pickup and they also do curbside pickup of food scraps. So, I would suggest that perhaps we look at how they're accomplishing that, you know, how they're accomplishing both goals that we in the village would like to see, the food scraps pickup and maintaining the rear yard service. So, and again, I really appreciate that, the fact that the board has listened to the residents and that longstanding service that's been, as I said, forever in the village of Tuckahoe will continue. So, thank you very much for being so attentive to what residents have been expressing.
Thank you. I appreciate all your comments, Mary. We, in regards to the food scrap program, we actually adopted the model from Scarsdale. They were very, very beneficial in helping Tuckahoe to get the program off the grounds. And it's, this is began in January of this past year. I sort of think that things would have been moved along a little bit more efficiently if we didn't have this thing called COVID-19, which sort of, but it's an excellent program. And we were very fortunate that the county now will pick up the scraps from our yard here in Tuckahoe, rather than us having to drive it up to the recycling center. So, there is a huge surge of drive behind this type of program. And we're very much advocating for its continued and expanded use here in the village.
And I applaud you all for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. And you, hats off to the Environmental Committee. I mean, they're also, they've been, you know, they're the people up front advocating for the program and educating the public about it. So, my thanks to them as well.
I don't, Carl, I'm sorry. I just don't trust them. I don't trust them as far as I can...
All right.
That was awesome.
Okay.
That wasn't even Resident Evil. Someone else started to talk, but they pulled back, so...
Okay. Anyone else here in the room? Any comments about this public hearing, please?
In the room or on the call?
Well, I call this the room, but if you want to call it the call, I call it the room.
Well, I have a comment, several, as a matter of fact. I'm Elaine Gary, 56 Warren Avenue. I heard about the proposal about, well, both proposals about the changes to the DPW services only today. So, I strongly oppose the leaf pickup proposed change because I have three 40-foot street trees in front of my house. They are village trees, not my trees. And there's no possible way I could bag all of those leaves. I mean, we're talking about 100. I view this as a significant reduction in services without a corresponding reduction in taxes. And I didn't hear, I listened to last week's, last month's, well, the July meeting, when I, today, when I heard about this, I didn't hear any rationale for this. All I heard was about the rear yard pickup. Rationale is the same, that it'd be up the men to do other things. The only thing I heard that was being proposed was the scrap, food scrap pickup, which I wholeheartedly support. But I think that for the five or six weeks that this leaf pickup, if that's the trade-off, then I think the leaf, the food scraps could be suspended for those five or six weeks. I think if you took a poll, it would be, the vast majority of residents would prefer to have their leaves picked up than their food scraps, which if they felt adamantly about, they could bring to the DPW for those five weeks. The only way I could possibly comply is if I hired a landscaper privately. And I'm not willing to do that. I mean, you know, that's what village taxes are for. These are street trees. The leaves fall in the street. So, you're basically asking people to clean up the street. I don't mind raking them, but I couldn't, you know, as I said, they're 40 to 50-foot trees. I couldn't possibly bag all of those leaves. I have informally asked a few neighbors when I heard about this today. Nobody was even aware of this. But I can tell you, every reaction was extremely negative. It is viewed as a big takeaway. And what I heard from two people is, "Well, then, we just won't pick up the leaves. We'll leave them there." So, if you're talking about a safety hazard, I think, you know, a street full of leaves and sidewalks full of leaves are a significant safety hazard. And there are ancillary issues. Even if they were to be all bagged, there's no place to store dozens and dozens and dozens of bags. I mean, this is a very narrow street. Cars already, even when there's nothing else on the street, cars have to, like, pull over to one side so that someone can pass. Well, if you're lining the street with bags, and it wouldn't just be on garbage day because you can't pick them all up just the day before, then you're asking for trouble. I mean, cars are going to hit you. They're going to, they're going to be knocked over. They're going to end up in the street anyway. So, you know, without some rationale as to why this is being done and what benefit there is to residents, then, you know, I would continue to oppose this.
Okay, thank you. Just as a clarification, the food scrap program is not tied into this public hearing. Has nothing that's too...
Well, all right, I know that. But I'm saying, I listened to the last meeting and there was no rationale given for this. There was no discussion of the leaf at all. But what the residents, what Frank said when the residents brought this up about, you know, what's the trade-off? He said to free up the men to give additional, to do additional things. The only thing I heard was the food scrap. Maybe he's planning on something else that we're going to get in return for this reduction of services. But if it is, all right, say it isn't even the food scrap. If it's, I would like to continue the leaf pickup. And if there isn't enough manpower to do both, I would rather suspend something else, like the food scrap or metal pickup or bulk pickup or whatever. We're only talking five weeks. And I think this will make a big difference to people's lives versus, you know, picking up a refrigerator can wait.
So... I'd like to second that emotion.
Thank you.
No, I really, lovely Bill of Southside Street. I really believe that the picking up the leaves, the leaf pickup for that period of time is just imperative. We give up something else. And I'm looking at our street, which is dead end and narrow and everything else, that the accumulation of leaves. We have huge trees that I, and we have that we can figure out some other way. Give up something else for that to... Again, it's five weeks of them. But that's just imperative for our C.R. High Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Billups.
Reverend Gerald. 15 Wallace Street or 15 Marble Place, whichever one, they both feel like home. I have a question about the background on where this recommendation came from. Because, you know, part of my thinking, and I agree with what the two ladies before me, Lovely and the other young lady who spoke before me, as a matter of, as a matter of public interest, I would, I would think that leaf pickup is an imperative because of a public health issue. Public health issue, obviously, with respect to driving or walking. It's kind of difficult to navigate a street that's filled with leaves and particularly when the ground is wet. There's slipping issues. And I don't know how, I was a law enforcement officer. Served as a advanced accident investigation reconstructionist. One of the, one of the major concerns during the fall, as it relates to motor vehicle accidents, are leaves. So, I don't know where the recommendation came from or was there any thought given to, you know, whether or not you suspend leaf pickup? So, I like to hear where this recommendation came from.
Number one, it's a question of efficiency, making the department more efficient. And it was also environmental concerns when we're utilizing these giant vacuum cleaners and using three members of the DPW, actually six, because one works north end and one works the south end of the village. So, that were, those were the two primary movers of this modification proposal.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry if I'm interrupting. But if you're saying that the men can't be spared to do that...
I didn't, no, I did not say...
Well, okay, I'm sorry. All right, I don't want to misquote you. But the use of manpower for that. Instead, you're going to have thousands of bags on the street and they're just going to have to pick those up. So, how is that a saving of manpower when they're going to have just as much work? Instead of a machine doing it, they're going to be doing it manually.
It's much more, it would be much more efficient for them to load a truck up with leaves that are already bagged versus walking down a street. As we all know how they do this.
Right.
And you only do one side of the street at a time, vacuuming leaves. So, you have a noise pollution. You have a, you have an air quality issue as well with the motors that are on that truck. And it's also, I mean, there is some concern for what's in those leaves that are being picked up by the truck. So, it's just not an efficient way for us to pick up the leaves. And we feel that bagging those leaves or even better, if you mulch those leaves back into your lawn, it's just much better for the environment in the end. And these DPW employees can be utilized doing much more productive projects here in the village.
Okay, I don't put a single leaf from my property on the street. These are all street trees I'm talking about. And talk about efficiency, bagging 50-foot trees, three of them, is not efficient. And it is frankly impossible for me to do. I could not do that. So, you know, I'm all for efficiency and for environmental. The leaves get composted, just like the, you know, food scraps. I just don't see how it's going to free up so much manpower if they have to pick up bags and bags and bags of leaves from everybody's house. I mean, it's a trade-off. But it's not like it's, you know, clear cut one or the other. It's just doing a different task.
Okay, every Thursday, those leaves will be picked up by DPW that are at curbside. Either in bags or in plastic containers or, as I suggested, or has been suggested for many years now to just mulch those leaves back into the lawn.
All right, but I'm saying I don't have a lawn. I'm talking about the street tree and the leaves that fall in the street. And it's not insignificant. I mean...
I, I know they're not, believe me.
And there is no way to mulch them to. There is no lawn to put them on or to rake them to or...
They need, these are big trees on the sidewalks. We're not talking about our lawns. I don't have a lawn to put it on either. I have one magnolia tree. I can take care of that. But the, most of the leaves that are out there, those huge trees on the village sidewalks on High Street.
I'd like, may I speak, please?
Sure.
Yeah. Just two points occurred to me. Number one is, I don't know how many residents are really familiar with mulching in place. And I do understand that many residents don't have the property to do it. But those who do have sufficient property, I'm not sure if folks are aware of the benefit of mulching in place. And perhaps some sort of an outreach or educational effort could be made to talk about this program and encourage those who can do it to do it. So, that's, you know, one suggestion that I wanted to make. The other thing is that with respect to, you know, the efficiency of it, I kind of really understand what, you know, the previous speaker was talking about because actually, they'll still have to be picked up. And in terms of the environment, they're being mulched. I mean, they're being recycled. They're being recycled at the center in East Chester. So, in terms of the environmental piece of it, I think that you're doing a good job in terms of recycling the leaves either way.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to say something, please?
Yes.
Gianpaolo Dino, 52 Warren Avenue. Okay, first of all, I hadn't heard about this here until late this afternoon. Okay, and I read up on it when I could. And what do you call, I'd like to, how should I say? Reiterate the same thing that the two ladies had said. Okay? All my leaves are village leaves. Hey, they're on the, what do you call this? Space between the sidewalk and the street, okay? And I just don't think it's fair that, how should I say, with our taxes we're paying for, all right? We should have to bag them. And the thing is, I have, you know, I'm elderly now at this point, as much as, you know, I hate to admit it, okay? But, excuse me. I would probably have to pay my lawn guy, you know, additional in order to bag them, okay? When this was all part of my taxes before. He rakes them, he leaves them there. They come, they suck them up. I've been a resident of this village for 50 years almost, okay? And it's always been that way and it's worked well, all right? And is, like I said, the thing about it is, okay? It's the village leaves. It's not mine. They can't be mulched, okay? All right? And it's, it's just not a fair thing.
Thank you, Mr. Paolo Dino.
If no one else is going to speak, may I please make two more points?
I'd like to speak, please, if you don't mind. So, here's a question for you. Given that, I was on a call today with the county regarding business stuff. And one of the things that came up was the issue of budgets regarding what's happening in Albany and DC and all that stuff. So, there's, we're not going to get aid or as much aid or any aid. Who knows what we're going to get? So, is this something that we're talking about now that might have to happen because of budget cuts that might come down the road because of the issue with COVID? Or are you trying to be preemptive by doing this? I just was thinking about that might be an issue. Or what other things are you thinking about? Because if, if the budget is going to be what I think it's going to be, what everyone's saying, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. So, is this something you're trying to preempt by doing this? I just thought it might be something to let everyone know what you're thinking.
This is a conversation that we probably began in the beginning of this year, well before COVID. However, though, but what you just said, Mike, is now because of COVID, you know, I, you know, yeah, it's something that has to be considered at some point. Hopefully not here in Tuckahoe, but it's a real possibility.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, is there anyone else?
If no one else who hasn't spoken wishes to speak, I would like to make another comment.
Okay.
Okay. All righty. With respect to the trees, I remember back in the day when we didn't have tree-lined streets in Tuckahoe. And I think part of the beautification of Tuckahoe is the trees that have been planted over the years. I mean, I remember going back to Phil Tobin when he was mayor and started putting trees in on Main Street. So, I just hope that nobody decides that, "Oh, my goodness, these trees are such a problem. We have to take the leaves up in the fall and we have the trucks out there and air pollution and all the rest of it." So, I really want to make the point that I hope this will never go down the road where folks say, "Hey, we don't want our trees anymore." So, that's, that's one point I wanted to make. The other point I wanted to make is, with respect to notice, the gentleman who said he just found out about it today, I would like to suggest that perhaps the website could be used in a way to inform the public more clearly, more earlier about what the issues are that are coming before the board. I, I mean, I happened to check the website I, I mean, I happened to check the website a couple of days ago and I didn't really see anything on it. When I looked today to try to get the Zoom ID and password, it wasn't on there. It wasn't on until later tonight. That's a separate issue. But I would suggest that it would be probably helpful for those who, those of us who live in Tuckahoe to be a little bit more aware of what's coming on the agenda. So if the website could be used for that purpose, I think that would be very helpful. Because I don't think a lot of folks really know what's going on. I mean, you have to really be paying attention and a lot of people aren't, understandably. And, and the third point I wanted to make with respect to layoffs, when this was brought up back in July, the whole issue of efficiency and elimination of certain services, it was never, ever talked in terms of layoffs or anybody being laid off. And all of us, everyone is, well, I shouldn't say everyone, sorry. I know that most people are not in favor at all of laying off any of the workers in order to accomplish any of these efficiencies. So I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Thank you.
I'd like to make another comment regarding that. How should I say, okay, my fault that I didn't look to see what was on the agenda or anything else like that. But one of the things regarding the trees, when I first moved onto Warren Avenue, okay, one of the things, many, many years ago, okay, that I really enjoyed, it was like a tunnel. It was the old oak trees that you, that were on the block, both sides, okay? And it was like going down through a tunnel to go, to go from one end of Warren Avenue, which is only one block long, to the other end of Warren Avenue. Okay, again, but those were all the village trees. Village trees at that time had big old roots and everything else like that. They broke the sidewalks and everything else like that. We as residents had to pay for the replacement of our sidewalks, okay? Okay, which, which was caused by the village tree. All I'm saying is village trees are putting down the leaves, no problem. I have a gardener, they rake up the leaves, they put them in a pile, they get sucked up. It's been that way since I've been here for a long time, okay? And I'd like to see it to continue.
I'd also, I'd also like to make a, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry, didn't change the picture. If you're also talking about pollution from those machines, if everybody has to, or people who have, who can't bag, have to hire landscapers, there's going to be far more pollution from leaf blowers than there currently is. People who rake now, who are going to have somebody, no, no gardener is going to rake that many leaves. We're going to be listening to nonstop leaf blowers, which is already a problem. So, I mean, again, it's a trade off. You might be saving on one side, but you're going to have other pollution for a different reason. Same thing, it might be not take as much time for them with the machines, but then they're going to be spending more time lifting bags and putting them in a home. So, you know, I, I would appreciate more rationale of how it will benefit us. I understand from the DPW's point of view, but from what I heard Frank say last time, it was so they could provide more services. So, you know, again, how does this benefit the, the village?
Just give a scenario. I'm sorry, Elaine.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to give a brief scenario on what's going on right now. I mean, how we handle leaves. And a lot of people don't know the intensity of picking up the leaves. And, and again, I, I think what we're trying to do, just like a lot of other municipalities, this is not new to many municipalities. They have a program which is called Love Them and Leave Them. And what that program simply is, is to mulch your leaves in place. Leaves have so many nutrients that we're just trying to get everybody to keep it in place. And I'll be honest with you, when I had my home here, it was the easiest method of getting rid of leaves. You know, you have to lug the leaves to the front and, you know, throw them on a tarp from the rear yard and drag them to the front. And yes, the amount of blowers that are used to do this is, it's, it's intensive. So what I simply did is I always wanted my front lawn to look pristine. And I had a small lawn in the front and I blew it to the back really quickly. Around the perimeter of my rear yard, I blew everything into the middle. And I just ran over it with a lawnmower. And I'm, I'm sure, you know, Mayor Greg Louisi would attest to the fact on how much easier it really is. But to discuss it a little bit more on a bigger level, what we do, and yes, leaf pickup is stated from December 15, I'm sorry, from October 15 to December. But, you know, we actually go two and a half months. We go two weeks before and two weeks after to make sure we get everything before the season. And another two weeks we extended so we can make sure we have all the piles that were left in the street. With that said, to do this, we have six of our highway guys, of our highway crew, six highway crew members and four pieces of machinery that are constantly blowing diesel fuel, blowing, vacuuming all these leaves in place. And again, with the trucks, with that fuel that's pushing all this along every day, eight hours a day for two trucks. What we would like to do, and I, I think what Mayor was trying to say to everybody, is that we have a pressing infrastructure that needs repair. Issues like potholes, sidewalks, drainage, electrical issues, we've taken on a lot over the years ourselves. We've saved taxpayers a lot of money. So we'd like to continue doing that. And, and I think if, if we could somewhat incorporate a sustainable initiative and free up these six individuals, I mean, I only have, you know, between eight and 10 highway workers, which isn't really a lot. So this is a perfect time before the winter sets in to get a lot of this infrastructure work completed. If we can't get it completed, you know, we're going to have to sub the work out and pay for it. These are just some of the thoughts that the board is, is thinking about. And it's only to benefit your tax dollars and, and keep this work within our department so we could continue doing what we have been doing, you know, for the past years.
Okay, what I would say to that is that I am a very strong supporter of everything the DPW does. And I am a very strong supporter of Love Them and Leave Them. That is exactly what I do.
You've always been very supportive, Elaine.
Okay.
You really have.
And, and you know I love the trees. But, you know, at the risk of being redundant, I'm not talking about trees on property. I'm talking about the street trees. There is no place to mulch them to, there is no place to mow them to. They can't even be blown onto my property. I'm up two flights of stairs. Lots of people have, you know, are up high and there's just no place to put them. And it isn't feasible to bag that many leaves. So, you know, I understand you want to provide service, but you're already providing that service. So if there's a trade off, I'd like to know what the trade off is. Maybe the people can decide, we'd rather have this than we'd have that. You know, if, if we can't have it, what we currently have.
I too am a great supporter of the DPW department. I, I talk about that all the time. But somehow we're thinking, everybody with a lawn in the back, that's not it. We're talking about the big trees on the sidewalk. First, the last week, or two weeks ago, when we were anticipating a storm, I was worried to death because the trees are on the wires. That's another thing. They're on the wires coming from houses. And the trees are beautiful, but there's a lot of problem with that. I just kept saying, I'd look out the window and say, please tell me that we're not one, that we're not going to have any service because of the huge trees. I think we're thinking about different ways that yards and lawns look or where the houses are or where the sidewalks are. For us on High Street, it's huge, huge trees that are on the sidewalk. In my backyard, I have a lot of trees, but they go down by the playground. In my daughter's yard, we don't bear trees and maybe take care of the trees inside. I'm talking about the ones that are right there on the sidewalk. We already have a sidewalk we can walk on. For us.
I'd like to say something, if I can.
Yes, Darrell.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, I worked for the Towne East Chester 12 years. And what they would do during the leaf season is they, they would hire, you know, part time workers so they wouldn't be short with the manpower for the other, you know, the other jobs that, that they would, you know, that they needed. So they would just hire people just for the couple of months for the leaf season. So they would have enough manpower.
Darrell, what we, what we typically do is we, we would hire them anyway. We try to spread them out throughout the year because it keeps us from hiring a full timer. But it's not only for leaf season, but we spread out the seasonal help throughout the year. And yes, they do help out. They help out quite a bit. And without their help, we're also lost. But again, we're, we're a constructive department. We do a lot of building, we do a lot of repairs in-house. And, and the more manpower I could free up of those that had been here for years and those that are highly qualified and skilled employees, I'd rather put them to use doing construction, constructive things. And so this work is not hired out and paid for by the village.
Well, as I see it, it'll be hired out and paid for by the residents. If, because, you know, there will be no option except to get a, to either not comply or to get a professional, you know, landscaper and pay for them. So, again.
Anyone else? At this point, I'm going to make a motion to close this public hearing. Do I have a second?
Wait, oh.
Second.
What does that mean? Excuse me, does that mean nobody can give comments after this? You're going to make, you're going to vote now or what is?
Closing the public hearing right now, yes.
Okay, well, would you consider opening it for like other comments? You know, emails and stuff like that before you vote? Because I can tell you, nobody I've spoke to even heard of this. And I think you're going to have a major compliance problem and a lot of very unhappy residents. And maybe you should hear from more of them. I'm happy to, I'm, you know.
Mayor, can we keep it open for one more month?
As the board, we can, yes, we can do that if that's what you want to do. As I said.
It, it sounds like there seemed like there were a lot of people who did not know that might want to weigh in. Maybe we give one more time so that we can give just one more month of, of opportunity for people to voice their concerns. Just, just a thought.
Okay.
Good to hear.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Let me just say, Gary, I know you're, Gary, the village attorney, we already had a motion to close it, which was seconded. So procedurally, how do we do this?
You could probably withdraw your motion, I guess, would be the easiest. Or just you can have a vote on your motion, it's seconded, you can vote on it. If it doesn't pass, then it's still open.
I'll withdraw if I could.
Okay. So, thank you, thank you, Gary. So with that being said.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Deputy Mayor Lang, go ahead.
It's, it's obvious that there are folks that aren't too thrilled. So perhaps giving it another month is appropriate.
Okay, so then I will make a motion to keep this public hearing open. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell. Trustee Howell.
Yes, she's muted.
Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, Camille, in favor.
It's okay. Trustee Lee.
Favor.
Mayor Louisi.
Not muted. I tried, but. We have a, so a second public hearing to consider a proposed local law to allow the adoption of a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2021 that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal law, section 3 dash C. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Louisi.
In favor. And just for clarification purposes, this public hearing is concerns us overriding the property tax cap in the next budget year. It just allows us the opportunity to do that if the need does arise. So it's a protection for the village. We don't know what our finances are going to be like, obviously, as well as the rest of the world. So it's just one of those things that allows us to override the property tax cap that's set by Albany. Would any members of the board like to comment at this time? Okay, anyone in the public that's in this Zoom meeting, question? Okay.
I have a question. Let me just want to ask you, I was speaking to the business council today regarding this issue. And they said that there were issues if you do override the cap based on what the state has currently said, based on when they put this law, whenever it was several years ago. Would you think because of COVID, would they amend those to not penalize or whatever the, the issues are regarding if you override it because of the situation with COVID?
Have no idea, Mike. I am sure that's not even been, been considered by, by the governor at this point in time. Just, just, you know, just for the record, this is something that the board has been doing for, probably since the, the tax cap was enacted. Again, it's a protection for the village, we don't know. Prior to COVID, you didn't know, you know, if the roof was going to fall in. And all of a sudden, you know, what you thought you, you had a healthy fund balance, all of a sudden had to be diverted to pay for some, some type of emergency repairs in the village. And I'm just using that as an example. So it's just something that the board does to protect itself when it does come time to pass the next budget. Okay, anyone else? Okay, that'll move on to the adoption of minutes, the approval of the minutes of the July 14, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Louisi.
In favor. At this time, this is the first opportunity for anyone in the room to address the board on any agenda items. Any agenda items.
I have a question on the Billwin thing.
Sure.
Because, you know, it's my favorite city. So I'm just curious, what is this? Is this in regards to the lawsuit that they put out? Or is this some other issue that we don't know about? I just.
I am going to divert the legal answer to that question to our village attorney.
So, so Mike, what it is, it's, it's basically agreeing to what the cost of the building is. There's a lot of environmental issues here. So what goes into the cost of the building, which is what our building permit fee is based on? This was an intensely negotiated document over a long period of time. We had environmental counsel involved in this. We think this is a, you know, a very favorable agreement for the village. But it really has nothing to do with that Revlon lawsuit that's pending right now.
Okay, just want to check, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, well, resolution number one, we're going to take that off. Is that correct, David?
Yeah, you should take that off. But in a clarification note, the public hearing, I believe, for the, the overriding the tax cap is still open. So that's something that should be closed if the board so chooses.
Okay.
Yes.
The first resolution will be taken off.
Okay. Do we, all right, so we did make a motion to close that public hearing on the tax override.
We have to do it now. We have to do it now.
Okay, so. We have a motion on public hearing number two.
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Louisi.
Favor. Forgive me for jumping out of order there. Okay, so resolution number one is off. So actually, resolution number two.
It's number one.
Consider a proposed local law to allow the adoption of a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2021 that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal law, section 3 dash C. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
In favor.
Mayor Luisee.
Favor. Resolution number three is reauthorizing the village administrator in consultation with the village board to take any necessary steps to relax zoning provisions to assist local merchants, restaurants, gyms, to aid in their expedited recovery due to the pandemic with respect to outdoor seating and other temporary rules through November 8 of 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisee.
Favor. Resolution number four, authorizing the adoption of a consolidated retention and disposition schedule for New York Local Government Records, LGS dash one. Only records that have met the minimum retention periods will be disposed. David, would you mind giving us a little, um, clarification on this one, please?
Sure, this is, um, this is something in the government world that we all, we have to deal with quite extensively. Um, previous to this, there was about four different schedules that we actually had to go through. Um, there was a financial schedule and, and like a HR schedule, and then about four of them. This actually combined all those schedules and updated when we can get rid of records. For example, um, we have vouchers, right, so we pay vouchers every couple of weeks. After seven years, we're allowed to take those vouchers and shred them and get rid of them. But when it comes to, um, like a payroll registry, we actually have to keep that payroll registry for something like 55 to 60 years after the employee retires, so there is, that is, it kind of runs the gamut of different records that we have to keep here, and this is a big, large book that basically has any type of record in there. Um, it's kind of the record bible where you look up what type of record you have, the retention schedule, and when you can get rid of it. So, New York put all these together, so we have one big book now.
Interesting.
It's sort of.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisee.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing an agreement with the Tuckahoe After School Care, Inc. for use of the Tuckahoe Community Center for an after-school care program from 2:00 PM until 6:30 PM. And I presume that is Monday through Friday, just for clarification purposes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisee.
Favor. Resolution number six is authorizing a settlement and mutual release agreement with Billwin Development Affiliates, LLC. Again, I thank you, Gary, for that explanation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisee.
In favor. Resolution number seven is authorizing the scheduling of the Tuckahoe Reorganization Meeting for Monday, October 5, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisee.
In favor. Resolution number eight is authorizing amendments and modifications to the fiscal year ending 2020 budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
Favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisee.
Favor. Resolution number nine is authorizing the closing of the following capital projects. Project number 201, 2018 dash 0106, which was for road resurfacing, and project number 2018 dash 0113, which was for swimming pools. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
Omaira, I'm sorry, in favor.
Me. Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
I just wanted to remind everyone.
Mayor Luisee.
In favor. Um, resolution number 10 is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $976,219.96. Do I have a motion?
In favor. I'm sorry. So moved.
Uh, New Year's Eve is coming early this year.
It is. I haven't even had a drink.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second, please?
Sorry.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisee.
In favor. And resolution number 11, um, which just came on this afternoon, a very important resolution, uh, authorizing the submission of an application to Westchester Library System for a Public Library Construction Program Grant for upgrades and improvements to the library in the amount of $68,375, with the village contribution half the amount of said grant. And, uh, this grant will be applied towards, um, electrical projects, the resurfacing of the sidewalk, the parking lot, and, uh, something that's very, very efficient, a radiant heating element uh, that will, uh, allow, uh, you know, obviously, the snow will not gather when it, because of this heating element that will be in the ground. And thereby, uh, reducing the need, not only for shoveling, but for us to have to put down that salt, which we know is so corrosive, so, uh, my hat off to Swadeesh and the library for, for putting this in, and I keep my fingers crossed that this will be approved. Was anyone on the board would like to comment on this?
And the library just keeps on giving. It's like the gift that keeps on giving. We're very grateful for them.
Okay, do I have a motion for resolution number 11?
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisee.
In favor. And, it's time we have no items up for discussion tonight. This will, at this point, it's departmental reports to the board, and we'll begin with our chief of police, John Costanzo.
Evening, Mayor, members of the board, members of our community. Uh, just a couple of announcements. Uh, we all know that Governor Cuomo issued, issued an executive order back in June to start a process for our community to talk about police reform and, and collaborative efforts. So, the state just came out with a guide and workbook, work, work, book to get this process started. Came out in mid-August, we've been working very hard to get this in motion. Uh, the first step, which we think would be most productive, is to have a complete overview of the police department in writing for the members of the public, the members of our board, to review as a starting point to start the discussion. Uh, so that should be ready probably mid-week, um, I, by Wednesday or Thursday, just putting the final touches on that. It's 20-something pages of, of our, summarizing all of the programs and services provided by the Tuckahoe Police Department. And again, I think that's the first step. The second step would probably be public comment as the mayor and the board, uh, you know, choose a committee to, uh, get this plan together, so we are very, uh, happy and looking forward to, uh, having these conversations and, uh, talking about all the services that our police department provides. So, again, I hope that, that out midweek, and, uh, we'll be talking with the board along the way to get this process moving on. We are in line with, with the timetable that the governor had suggested, uh, so we are not at all behind in the process. We're right where we should be. So I just wanted the, uh, wanted the public to be aware of. You know, just finally, we all know that school opened this week, and, uh, please be careful. School buses are out there, uh, you know, use caution in going about the village. Police department is following school buses and monitoring to make sure that everyone is obeying vehicle and traffic law. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Frank DiMarco.
I thought everybody was tired of hearing of me. Um, but listen, I, I just want to take this opportunity, really thank everybody. Elaine, Mr. Palladino, Mary especially. Lovely, uh, your input is really taken to heart. We need that. Uh, we need that to move forward. Uh, because the department does want to take on a lot of sustainable initiatives, and without your input, we can't do that. Uh, so I just want to take this opportunity. Thank you. Um, as far as DPW, we're paving right now. We're scheduled to pave. There'll be, uh, in our area next week. Uh, we're trimming trees from this last storm we've had. There's a lot of trees that have been damaged. We didn't have that many trees that have fallen, uh, believe it or not, maybe two out of the entire village, uh, which really wasn't a lot, uh, but we just want to further protect these trees with fallen limbs and, and just need to be pruned up and made safer. Uh, so I think by the end of the week, we will complete all that work. Uh, but basically, all in all, we're faring well, and, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Um, is Mr. Galuzzi, I don't see him here in the room. Okay. Um, Camille, do you have anything for us?
Yes. Okay, um, the first thing I'd like to speak about is residential parking permits. Due to the coronavirus, uh, we're encouraging all of the residents that get resident parking to do it by mail. They can begin the process now. Permits expire on November 30th, but you can begin the renewals now and get it started. This way, we're not inundated with a bunch of, uh, paperwork. Also, uh, just to reiterate, we must be able to, um, verify your name on the tax roll. If you're a new homeowner, we need a copy of your deed. Each car registration that is registered to that property must be sent to us as a copy. And please specify which car you want the sticker on. Uh, also, if you have parking for two cars in your driveway, and you only have two cars, you will not be given a permit. It's only if you don't have available off-street parking, and it's for designated streets as well. And non-property owners or, and co-ops, we need the copy of your shares and utility bill. And renters, we need a notarized, um, lease. And if you'd like, you have any questions, Jackie Ferretti is the one that handles all the parking, and you can email her at jferretti@tuckahoe ny.com. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I hadn't planned on mentioning, but I am, is we have eAlert. So anyone that is not aware of what is going on in the village, just go to tuckahoe.com and click alert, and you can pick what you want to get, um, sent to you. It's on the front page of our website. Very simple. Just subscribe. And you'll know everything that's going on in the village. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Camille. Mr. Garzett, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Burke.
I have a few things, but I believe the board is gonna cover them in their reports, so I'll wait for you guys, but just as a reminder to the community, the census, it's, uh, the time is running out. It is extremely important. We had a conference call today, and we talked about sales tax revenue that comes into the county and it is provided to each municipality. That is based on the 2010 census. It will be based on the 2020 census. It is real money for the Village of Tuckahoe. It is really important, so get out there. Friends, neighbors, anyone in apartment buildings, it is extremely important. We are getting close to our, our 2010, um, response rate, but we need it well over that, so, um, anything anyone can do, um, it's, it's kind of really important to get that out there. Um, and just as a side, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, Senator, Mayor, and, um, yes, Assemblywoman Pauling.
Senator Shelley May is gonna be joining us tonight, as well as Assemblywoman Amy Pauling. So I will turn the mic over to you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, thank you, thank you for allowing us to be on other calls.
Sure.
To join you, and it's good to be, um, back in front of the Tuckahoe Board. I, I wanted to be clear, uh, and I think Amy and I are on the same page, and we thank you for the opportunity to just make some clarifications about something that I think there's not complete information about the bail bill. Uh, so, you know, in January, I met with the board, thank you for that. That was at, um, Trustee Howell's suggestion. I, I was corrected earlier. And I met with the board and the chief, and we had actually a very constructive meeting about legitimate concerns about the bill we passed earlier in the year, particularly about a few areas that, um, I wanted to highlight, for me, that were important. One was what I call the repeaters, which is a problem we heard from chiefs throughout Westchester, which is a person who commits a, basically, a misdemeanor like petty larceny, uh, gets picked up. Under the bail bill, that person is not bailable, and yet the next day goes out and does it again. So if you live in Tuckahoe, and you are legitimately concerned that someone is breaking into cars on your street, and they're picked up and let out again, they do it a second time, under the existing bill we passed in January, that was not bailable, even on the second offense. So, uh, I heard you loud and clear, as well as other, as I say, other police chiefs and other communities that I met with throughout my district, and, um, went back and was very much an advocate for sort of what I would say the quality of life changes that had to be made in the bail statute. There were a number of other changes that I was in favor of making, uh, including, including strangulation, which is a domestic violence crime, in my opinion, as a bailable offense, which I was also raised in our conversation. We made a number of these changes, the changes, the modifications, which I think addressed many, but probably not all, but many of the concerns raised were addressed in the budget, uh, which was done at the end of March, sort of at the height of COVID. Notwithstanding that, in April, I asked to come back before the board and the Village of Tuckahoe, and I did appear uh, actually on April 13th. I can't imagine, you know, a worser time. And I reported on these changes, and it was, um, it's in your, uh, you know, in the videotape of that uh, meeting on April 13th, to clarify that, in fact, I know both Amy and I, uh, were advocates for changes in the bill to reflect the concerns we heard. Uh, I understand some people didn't like the bill at all. That, I happen to have voted for it, and believe that many of the, uh, underlying reasons why we had to change it were legitimate, and I supported them, and I still support them, and I stand by that, and I made that clear in our meeting. We had a frank meeting. I think these changes were changes that had to be made. And the other bills, uh, offenses that were included, that I think it's important to know, are now bailable. I include bail jumping, burglary in the second degree if it involved entering a living space, which captures some things that should have been bailable on the first go-round. Sex trafficking, aggravated assault on a child, which I had hoped would be included the first time, but I'm very pleased, like most bills that we've dealt with that. Hate crime of assault or arson, some persistent felonies, additional white-collar crimes, and aggravated vehicular assault, uh, resulting in the death of another person. and aggravated vehicular assault resulting in the death of another person, which was an incident that occurred on 287, you may remember. So there's other provisions that we changed. The two points I'd like to make are, one, like many pieces of legislation, they can be changed and modified over time. That is one of the good things about legislation. And I think that we made a very good faith effort to hear the concerns and to address many of them. And I think there's a misunderstanding that the law was not modified, not maybe not by the people in this meeting, but in the world at large. And I think it's important to clarify that these are bills that we work on improving. If we don't get it as right as we should or we have fundamental disagreements, we try to find areas of common agreement and move forward. So I wanted to clarify that and I appreciated the opportunity to come by. I have continued to meet with chiefs, as the chief knows, even after this and other bills that we passed, some of which are, you know, are controversial. But dialogue and agreement and disagreement are both part of the process. To do it respectfully is very important. I'm committed to doing that. I'm happy to come back again and hear of additional concerns. But I do think it's quite important to know that I feel like we, Amy and I, heard a lot of the issues and we were quite outspoken in our advocacy for changes that reflect the kinds of quality of life offenses that we believe should allow a judge to decide whether to issue bail. Now, that doesn't mean a judge always will, as the chief knows. You know, there are judges that don't issue bail as a regular practice and there are others who are more strict on bails. But the bill allows a far greater number of offenses. So with that, I won't go on too long. I will defer to Amy, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Amy?
Yeah, hi.
You're Assemblywoman Amy Pauling. How are you? Good evening.
Good, good. It's all, it's good to see you if only by Zoom.
I like your botanical gardens.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's actually a scene in White Plains. I change scenes. I should have put a Tocco scene in for this meeting. You know, every, every, it makes me feel like I'm back in the district. So the, thank you, Shelley. That was very thorough. I completely agree with everything you said. You know, we did have, I thought, very good conversation about the need for bail reform and at the same time, the concerns that we all had, you know, going in. And we want to continue to keep the dialogue open because, you know, one of the, you know, we did make some changes based on the earlier meetings and what we thought we heard. We need to have, you know, evidence that, you know, that, that we need to make further changes if we do from the examples that are happening in our community. So we only know that by what we hear from all of you. And we expect and hope that you're going to continue to keep up that dialogue with us so that we can go forward. Because, you know, honestly, you know, I do a lot of laws, so does Shelley. The laws are a complete refinement on other laws. And this is one example of a law that's going to evolve over time as we know more about what's happening in the various communities. So, so we need to hear that. So if something is not working, you know, you know, we heard about some of the car thefts. I know it's happening all over my district. And, you know, we thought we addressed it by second offenses. If that's not the case, we need to understand that so that when we go back, we can make sure that we don't have those kind of occurrences in our community. It's not what we want. It's not what we expect. So, but we need to understand that a little better. So I don't want to, you know, obviously we need to hear from the, the police chief and, you know, and the board about the practical impact of those things that we passed. But I thought Shelley framed it really well. She, she mentioned some of the crimes that we did change. You know, I know I sent an email with that list to all of the trustees and the mayor. If there's any further clarification on that list, I'm, you know, happy to go through it. And as well, you know, you know, I've always appreciated the collegial working relationship we've all had. And I, and I think that we can, we need you here. You know, we need to understand, you know, what's happening on the streets, what's happening in our community so that we get it right. Because quality of life in Westchester is really why we're here, why we, why we all live in this beautiful county that we do live in and we want to maintain that. So, so, you know, so thank you. And, you know, we always have an open door. I know, you know, in that email, I, I wondered, you know, particularly about domestic violence and sex trafficking. Those are two bills that I put in to make further reform. I don't know whether they're needed and I'm looking for some input as to see whether how hard I should push those bills. So, you know, whatever you're hearing, you know, we want to know. So, so with that, I'll let you get back to your meeting and, you know, and thank you for, you know, letting us clarify. And, you know, if there's anything else particular, we would be happy to clarify that.
Amy, can I ask a quick question? How are you? This is Daniel Lang. So Shelley mentioned a few changes. Were there any changes to discovery at all?
Yeah, yes, I was gonna, I was gonna get into that. I'm sorry. I was focused on bail. And in fact, we had a good conversation about discovery when we met in January and the burdens that it places on small, smaller communities, we're very aware. It relaxed the requirements. Let me see if I can get it right. At the time we originally passed it, you had a very, very short time and the chief was talking about that to turn over the evidence and particularly if you had a camera evidence. I remember having that conversation. We increased it to 20 calendar days when a defendant is in custody and 35 calendar days when a defendant is not in custody. So it's a substantial modification. I, I did want to also point out these bail changes went into effect on July 1st because we're in the middle of the pandemic, but they did go into effect. And the discovery changes, I will get the effective date. I sort of think they were, they were already effective, but I will get back to you on the exact discovery timeframe. But that issue that we discussed in detail, the cost to the village, and I remember that of complying, we heard and we took that back. And, you know, we, we couldn't get as much as we wanted, but we got a pushing out of the requirement that you basically be forced to have overtime to collect the information in such a short period of time. And we can give you more on it. I was focused on the bail, but I do have something on the discovery part before me. So I feel comfortable speaking about that.
And honestly, you know, again, you know, because, because of COVID, we haven't had the kind of interaction that, you know, we usually do. So it would be very helpful to understand if the changes were, were, I mean, I'm sure that, look, they were better. The question is, were they good enough? And in what ways do we need to still yet make some reform? I don't know whether we're going back to session. You know, COVID's sort of thrown a monkey wrench into everything that we're doing. But we will be going back in January. If we don't go back before, we might be going back before. And if we do, these are the kinds of things that we should know when we do go back because we can make some changes. So, you know, please let us know.
Yeah, yeah. And I would say I just, I want to be clear and I think I made this clear. You know, I, I supported this, these changes. I believe that they were correct. That doesn't mean that all these things that we do don't require, as Amy said, refinements and making sure that we get it as right as we can. Legislation is a compromise. We have a lot of differing views. There's 150 people in Amy's conference and 63 in mine representing all over the state. And I do, I just want to reassert that we may have differences about how to handle these things, but we are both, I think, committed to hearing and representing the views that we heard there, particularly issues of cost and, and the care of individuals in the community about their safety. We, we take that very seriously. And so I think we tried to address much of it, as Amy said. If we need to do more, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I see someone has a hand raised. I don't know how to handle that.
Who is that person?
Scooter.
Scooter.
Scott.
Scooter, Scooter Scott.
That would be me. Good evening, everybody. In. Am I still muted? I don't think I'm muted. So Senator Mayor, number one, I want to thank you because your office was very helpful at the beginning of this pandemic in my getting my unemployment benefits. I've forgotten the gentleman's name, but he was instrumental in my, after eight weeks, finally getting my money. So thank you for that.
All right, good.
When you say that you supported the reform and that you feel it's needed, I really, because one of the things, as just a citizen of the state, never mind just locally in the community, was what was the goal of the reform? And what alternatives? What was the range of ways that you looked at in achieving that goal before deciding on this?
Well, I won't, I, because this is.
I don't need to fold. It's just.
This is the, the trustees asked me to come briefly on this, but I will just say that I think there, there is a sense and there was evidence that those with money were able to get out of being incarcerated prior to trial. And those without money, particularly for non-violent crimes, were stuck in jail prior to dispensation of their crime and that the consequences of being in jail before the decision on a, you know, on a non-violent crime have grave consequences for people's jobs, their ability to take care of their family and all these other things. So because money was the decider, we want to make some changes in which offenses were available. And basically, we started with the premise that violent offenses should be bailable and non-violent offenses, those are phrases in the law. I didn't make them up and they don't always match what we think in common sense. But that violent offenses were available and non-violent offenses were not generally available with some exceptions. But the exceptions, in my opinion, worked broad enough to encompass the range of things that ordinary people, like breaking into a car, would think are serious, even though under the law, it's defined as a Class A misdemeanor. So the idea was that money should not be the reason why someone is in jail prior to conviction or dispensation of a non-violent crime. And we were trying to address that. And, and again, this was a big change. It had been in the works for many years. Once we became in the majority and the assembly was on board, we moved forward.
I understand. I'm just wondering, did you look at any other options besides the avenue that you chose?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off. There was an extensive hearing last fall before COVID, before a lot of these things, where there was a great deal of testimony on various approaches of other states that have looked at this and there have been other approaches. And I'd be glad to talk to you offline and go through some of it.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Don't think so. I'm looking for raised hands in the room, Senator. Don't see any.
Mayor, this is, Mayor, this is the chief. If I could just comment for a moment?
Yes, absolutely, Chief.
So thank you, Senator, and thank you, Assemblywoman, for getting on this meeting and for conversations that we had back in January when the bail reform and discovery was first introduced. And I think we did make some pretty good gains in this last budget when it came, particularly with discovery. I think we made some really good progress there. I think what you see across Westchester County, Tocco included, is that property crimes are skyrocketing. And part of the problem, part of discussions that we had, and I realize that your two voices and you, you know, control the Senate or the whole Assembly, is that these crimes against property were, where cars again broken into, stolen, where larceny is going on in supermarkets and, and, you know, department stores are pretty much going unabated. Or part of the problem is that judges still don't have the ability to take, you know, recidivism into consideration. And I think you did make very good progress with some of the considerations. But I think, and you, and, and I'm, you know, I want the public to know that both of you have met with the Westchester Chiefs Association. Your dialogue is still continuing and we appreciate that. So I don't want anyone to think that, you know, that this subject is closed by any means and we appreciate you listening. But I think, you know, from our perspective, at least in the Village of Tocco, we really need to address the recidivism when it comes to property crimes.
Can I just, thank you, Chief, and thank you for acknowledging that. And I know we are committed to continuing to meet. And I've said that and I'm sure Amy too. But the, the change that was made says that a second offense becomes eligible for bail when the second offense against a person or property is committed when released and it's an A misdemeanor. So this issue, which, you know, you pointed out very clearly is a problem in Tocco and other communities. The breaking into an apartment or the breaking into a car without damage to a person. On the second offense, right now, the judge can issue bail. I don't know whether they are. You would know better than I. But we hear you and we're happy to work on making it better.
Chief, I guess the question I wonder, you know, when I, you know, when we were, you know, knowing that we were going to be talking a little bit about this, we were looking at it, Shelley and I together today. And, you know, we made that change. Is it because they're not convicted yet? You know, is it because, are they arrested duplicate times? And the, you know, like what is, you know, what, why? Because clearly if they were convicted of either a misdemeanor A or a felony property crime, they would be eligible for bail. But is it that they're not yet or is it?
Part of the problem, part of the problem is, is, and what's exasperating this whole scenario is that courts are not open. So, so there are several arrests and they're, they're really not, you know, they're giving desk appearance tickets to come back to court without seeing the judge because it's not bail eligible in the first place. So that compounds, I mean, COVID has made bad situation much worse. No doubt about it. So, you know, again, I do think that with a little more leeway, giving judges just a little more leeway when it comes to property crimes, you know, in the next discussions that you have on bail reform, I think would go a long way in fixing the problem.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief.
You. Anyone else?
I just have one thing. You had mentioned that we, you had cited any changes in the legislation. And then you mentioned there are more changes coming.
No, no, not more, not more coming. No, that's all we've done so far. If we, if we have, as Amy said, if there are additional issues we should raise, we'll be glad to raise them when we go back. I would be honest in saying right now, the state is in the middle of this fiscal crisis and it's not clear if we're going back. And if we're going back, it's going to be to try to deal with these money shortages for everything, including towns, villages and schools. Those were the changes we made in the budget at the end of March that made changes to the bail bill.
And remember, they just got implemented. I mean, so we're talking July, we're only, we're only a couple of months past that. So, so I, I think, you know, even to the extent that the property misdemeanor, A felony, repeated crimes were changed. They were just changed. So, so, so I, there's a likelihood or this general feeling that let's give it a couple of months at least, you know, which we've just begun to have, you know, to see what that translates to. And, and we're not back in session anyway. But as Shelley said, you know, when we go back, we're much more likely at this point to deal with what is now about a $14 billion deficit and growing for everybody. And not that there's, nobody has a clue when we're going to go back. You know, we're waiting for the federal government. We're waiting to find out if the federal government's going to be giving us any aid. And, you know, while we're waiting, you know, there are, there's, everyone's in jeopardy. I mean, I, I'm sure that you've also been cut at your 20% just like everyone else, which we gave the authority to the governor to do. That's not definitive though. Eventually you will get paid back unless we go back and deal with that. So we will be, but remember our fiscal year ends March 31st. So we have a little bit of time where we could even possibly go back. We're hoping the federal government. We're hoping the federal government's going to come through and give us at least some monies so that we don't, we're not faced with the predicament of either leaving those, that 20% out there, or raising taxes, or bonding. Both are not good choices. So we're, you know, we're waiting and hoping that, you know, we don't have to do that, and yet at the same time can restore the money. So, so while we're in that wait game, we're not, we're not back in session. And at the very worst, we'll be back in session in January like we would be. And that would be, you know, three months, let's see, September, October, November, four months from now, roughly. And, you know, at that point, you know, again, it might make some sense to come back together to hear, you know, did the changes work? You know, when the courts, because the courts are reopening now, you know, is it helping? Put some of those, setting bail and putting those guys behind bars, you know, so that they're not repeatedly vandalizing our stores and our homes and our, our community, you know? And if they're still out there, you know, then we can, Shelley and I would be armed in January when we go back officially to, to be able to address some of those things. So, you know, so maybe we can think about, you know, a December date unless we here, we're going back sooner, and then we would want to, you know, talk to you earlier.
I understand the money's an issue, but the safety on our streets is a huge problem.
Yes, I understand that too, but I would reassert what the chief said. I mean, while the courts are closed, it's a complicating factor, not attributable to the bail law or to discovery law. It's attributable to COVID. We're dealing with a crisis all over the place. And I'm not just, you know, it's terrible to live with concern of public safety. I am very aware of it in Tocco and elsewhere in our districts. And we've made, we've made a change, and I agree with Amy, and I think the chief will work with us. I'm confident in compiling data about areas where he believes the law needs some further modifications. With data, we can make the more compelling case if additional modifications should be made. And I think our colleagues will be open to that. But it isn't, it isn't the bail law, I just would clarify. The bail law allows people to be eligible for bail and bail to be set when they break into a car day one and then break into cars day two. On day two, if it's an A misdemeanor, which is petty larceny, bail can be set. That is up to the judge. So I just want that to be clear. And that, you know, I understand breaking into cars, breaking into an apartment, breaking into stores. These are scary things in any community, and we took, we take them seriously. And this bill changes reflect the fact that we heard the issue.
Okay. In, in August, it was the breaking in a home. The man assaulted, assaulted a, the owner of a house and their son. And the guy was let out.
Well, was that, I would have.
I have a problem with that.
Yes, I don't know the facts in that case, and maybe the chief does, what the person was charged with and whether it was bail-eligible. I mean, one would have, these are the kinds of things that we look to the chief and the chiefs and the DA's office of giving us the data to show where a particular case may be, maybe should have been bail-eligible. But that may be a case where the person was bail-eligible, I don't know, and the judge didn't set it. So I, it's important to be into the weeds a little bit about these. These are individual cases. Each one involves a criminal charge. And if there are criminal charges, it ought to be included. We look forward to working with the chief and the DA's office and hearing what those are and taking that down.
May I ask a question? Just a clarification, Senator. When you're saying the judge, like, who are you, is this, is this like the Tocco judge? Is this Westchester? I'm sorry, I'm not really sure.
Well, could you please identify yourself, please?
Oh, yes, 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 my name, yes, my name, Julie Santo, 29, Sylvan.
Hi, Julie. The law says the judge, I believe, who's the arraing judge. I think it's generally would be at the, at the Tocco level unless, I mean, the chief would know better than I, but there might be cases that go higher than that. But the judge who sets the original bail upon arraignment.
Okay, thank you.
Whoever it may be.
That it?
Just one, one thing. Hi, Senator and Assemblywoman Amy Paulin. My question is, not a question, it's a statement. It's, it appears when the law first came out that even though, you know, reform is important and needs to be done. I've had some experience with the judicial system myself and understand that. But it seemed like it was very tilted towards, more towards the criminal and less towards the victim. And these changes you're making seem very positive. But it's probably something that's going to have to keep going because, as Gina says, and it's an interesting dilemma. If, if I see someone breaking into my car, my immediate reaction is going to be, well, I'll just go call the chief because he lives right near me. But my immediate reaction is going to be to do something, and that's what gets risky because you don't want to engage. I know that's one of the first things the police tell, do not engage a criminal. And we don't want to have vigilanteism and whatnot. So that's why these changes, I think, need to be probably promoted more. Because I wasn't sure of all the changes either, as, because, you know, if you read the media, you hear what they say, whatever. So I think it's important that whatever changes are made, we, you know, we know about. So maybe the chief updates us, or maybe you guys give us an update. And, and that'll help because initially, when it came out, there was a lot of, a lot of people were afraid about that, while it seems like this is very slanted towards the criminal and not so much towards the victim, even though there is a need for bail reform, no question.
Right. So Mike, if I may, you make a good point. But it's also about getting at the data that led us to that reform. So you said it seems like it might be tilted toward a criminal, but remember, there's a lot of people in jail who have not been indicted and, you know, cannot pay their bail. So that's a, that's created a whole nother serious set of issues. So there's data behind that, too. And I think, you know, when we talk about data, you have to look at that data at every case, right? All sides.
Can I just add that one of the additions we did make to this point is even collecting more data? And thank you, Trustee Howell, for making that point. There needs to be good data about these cases and what happens. And we have imposed additional data requirements, not on the, not on the village, but on the OCA, the Office of Court Administration, to actually keep good records of when bail is set, under what circumstances. So I, I would agree that, you know, these are each, again, each is an individual case, each is an individual allegation. And I just would say that I know Amy and I made an effort to come back in the, in the middle of COVID to explain. Doesn't mean that it gets out there. And I know there's a popular narrative that the law was not modified. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be here to address that there were modifications made in response to these issues.
You know, we, we make changes to the law all the time. I mean, that's what we do. I mean, just, just, you know, in last session, where we didn't do a lot of bills, we did one for, that I sponsored for the Pelham Police Department that has some ramifications for all police departments. And that was because they wanted, they had a lot of domestic violence incidents, that they wanted to know where, if there were guns in the home before they went into, to a possible dispute. And the, the SAFE Act prohibited, inadvertently prohibited their ability to get that information. So we did a, we did a law change. No one realized that, that it, that we didn't mean to do that. But it was, it was, it had an impact. You know, the, the specific words were unclear, and we had to make a change so that the police department could get the information that they were looking to get, which is just who had a gun in their town, or their, their two respective villages, because they were having an uprising in domestic disputes. And so we made a change. And the same is true for everything we pass. The SAFE Act was relatively new, and so that impact wasn't felt for a couple of years. And I would argue that this is going to be an evolving law for the next several. We may not see or hear in this community about a specific case relating to either bail reform or discovery. And then we'll say, wow, you know, we should make that change because it makes no sense not to. And, and we will be making those changes. And that's why it's very important, even if it's a singular example that shows a gross problem, that singular example is showing a problem that needs to be fixed. Sometimes it's multiple examples of a smaller problem, and that too would need to be fixed. So we are always making those kinds of changes. And it's very good that we're paying attention to those issues right now for this. And I would encourage us all to continue to do that, even when times change and the courts are open, and we are seeing a better ability to, to bring people to justice than we are right now. But there will be changes to this law, and, and we are very happy to, you know, to work with you to figure that out.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the room?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So first of all, okay, I'm a correction also worked in the jail. So over 17 years. So I've seen a lot of inmates, and I actually work in booking, who come into the jail. And they've been arrested, but it doesn't mean that they're guilty of any crime. Anybody can be arrested and placed in jail and have to wait till they go to court. And some, a lot of them couldn't afford bail, so they remained in jail. They remained in that environment, and you're subject to violence, mental health issues because of the environment. You probably going to lose your job if you stay in there more than a week or so because a lot of times you have no way of contacting your employee to tell you, tell them what your situation is. So bail reform wasn't for criminals. Bail reform was for people who couldn't afford to pay bail before they were even convicted of a crime. So, you know, we need to start telling the truth about what bail reform was for. It's been used as a political football, and, you know, it's, it's enough already. Okay, thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. But I just want to point out, Darryl, that the point you made, that this is for people who were charged prior to any dispensation, they're presumed innocent. The consequences of being in jail, as you point out, for someone who's presumed innocent for a non-serious crime have had really dire consequences. And that was the impetus for changing the law. And I appreciate you making it so direct. Thank you very much for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay.
More quiet. Senator Mayor and Assemblywoman Paulin, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
When the dust settles, you know, when we can, if you come back, when we're going to talk about the budget, you know, whenever that shakes itself out. Just to, you know, give an update to our villagers about that. Because I know, as you said, it's going to be, it's going to be daughter, to say the least.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, thank you, Mayor, and thank you all.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hello? Hello?
Hello? I guess we're finished with our departmental reports. David, did you finish your report?
Yes, ma'am, I'm done.
Okay. Bring us to miscellaneous business. Tomorrow is the Village Board elections from 6:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. at the Tocco Community Center. If you have not voted via absentee ballot, please, please take this opportunity to come out and vote tomorrow. I am sure, and I know for a fact that there will be safety precautions in place. I am sure that you will need to wear a mask prior to entering the, the community center. I'm sure there's hand sanitizers that will be on the premises. So again, if you have not taken advantage of absentee ballots, please do your best if you feel comfortable to come out and vote tomorrow. Our next Village Board meeting will be October 5th at 7:00 p.m. And at this time, it will bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and we're going to begin with trustee Omira Andino.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I know that Senator and Assemblywoman left, but I want to thank them for taking the time out to come and talk with us. There has been a lot of talk about bail reform on, on social media, and, you know, people just sort of throwing it around. So I think, you know, having had this discussion, which was a very limited one, that it might serve us well to have a forum where we could give people the opportunity to voice their concerns and to hear from the legislators, the thinking behind bail reform, and why, you know, why they felt it was needed. So I just wanted to say that. So let me open up by saying that the library has partially opened today after five months of being closed. They have completed a reopening safety plan, and I want to thank Swadish and her team and David for completing that so that we could have a plan to help people remain safe. There, we will have curbside browsing and computer use by reservation only. So if you're interested in getting into the library, you should call 914-961-2121 so that you can get in and start getting back out there. They do have a number of procedures to, to disinfect and to partition or keep people separate. So there are some measures in place for those who might be wondering. A question, David, about the reopening safety plan, will we have that up on the website for people to view?
Yeah, it's not currently up there, but we can definitely put that up there. Definitely easy enough.
Yeah, I think that would be good for us to have up there so that people can go and see what the, what the safety plan is. And I know Swadish is making a few changes based on some feedback I gave her. So again, thank you to the library throughout this whole COVID pandemic and people being shut, shut in. The library has offered so much to keep people engaged and not go too, too crazy. So I want to thank the library, the staff, and especially Swadish, the director of the library. Let's see here. I also want to thank Bundles of Joy. In August, they assisted us with providing residents with diapers and formula and clothing. You know, COVID, a lot of people lost their jobs or became underemployed. And as, you know, for those of you who have children, I no longer have those children that age. I know how expensive formula and diapers are, so I was grateful that they came and provided that to many of our residents. I also want to thank the Children's Place and the Gap, who offered free, free new clothing to, for us to be able to provide to residents in the village. So thank you to them. Ecap, so Ecap will resume their after-school program again, beginning on September 21st. We will have about 18 kids served there in the after-school program in addition to the task that we're going to be, we'll have at the community center. So I just wanted to make everyone aware. The new director, Denise Chin, has done a lot of work to prepare the building, to take, you know, clean out areas so that we could have enough space for people to be socially distant. Kids will have their own desks. And this is a huge feat for them to have worked on because it's such a small space, and we want to try to maximize the number of children that we can get in there. Another thing that Denise Chin, which I have to really thank her, she's done an awesome job throughout this time. She's the director. She's going to be sponsoring a security guard training at Ecap for up to 10 people to help people gain skills. It's partly, she said, because there are a lot of facilities that are looking for people to help screen, do COVID screening, and so they're going to be getting COVID training as well as security guard training. So that's, that's a good thing. We will be cutting back on the food pantry days. So we, we were providing three days a month, and then we went down to two. We don't see that there seems to be as much of a need. So we're going to be going back down to one, one day a month where we distribute food, but there will. but there will remain three days of emergency need, availability, if you have an emergency need. And we will also thanks to West Cop, who will be paying for a full-time maintenance person to be able to help make sure that we keep the, the Ecap sanitized so that we can try to minimize the rate of infection if we can. Let's see, what else did she want me to tell you guys? Clothing distribution was done at Ecap and Ecap Director asked me to thank the Tuckahoe residents for being so, so generous. There were so many donations made that she wasn't able to provide everything to people in Tuckahoe, so they were able to give it to other municipalities who needed the clothing and help, help people in other municipalities as well. So that's good. We had our book reading, White Fragility, and I want to thank residents who came and contributed and participated. I also want to thank Dr. Gerald and Fraser, who agreed to facilitate and I think did a great job. It's a, it's a small step in some of the work that we're going to be doing, but I'm grateful that we had the opportunity to begin discussions on racism and hear from people, different people's perspectives. So that's, that's the majority. I do want to thank Mary O'Donnell, you, you made a good suggestion that I wrote a note about that I want to bring to the Environmental Committee about educating residents on mulching in place. So I'm going to bring that back. And Mike Dardano, you're on here, so I'm gonna ask you to remind me to do that so that we can begin some education for people who may, you know, may not know what that's about. So thank you for that. I just want to also update the residents and talk to you guys a little bit about, there was an event over the weekend in Eastchester, the Back the Blue event that was held in Lake Isle in Eastchester. And I was not invited. People asked me why I wasn't there. So I wanted to make sure that I informed the residents that I was not there because I was not invited. I did contact the town supervisor, Anthony Colavita, because I am the person who wants to go to the horse's mouth to, to ask for questions, to ask questions and to get answers. So I called and asked, why was it that I was not invited? And he informed me that it was not a town event, that it was not paid for by any town funds or taxes. That he was just asked to, to come there to speak. So I wanted to make sure there were some questions about that. There's a lot of stuff lying around on Facebook. That was what was said to me directly. So I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And I think that's it for me. Mayor?
Hey, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lang?
Yeah, so I'd also like to start by thanking Shelley and Amy for joining and trying to clarify a little bit for us and explaining the changes and the, perhaps the changes that might be, we might be in store for. So that was, I appreciate them joining us tonight. Thank you very much. Well, first I want to start by saying I want to thank all of the residents because our restaurants seem to be holding up. You know, the last thing we want to see is our restaurant doors closing. So I thank all the residents for coming out. However, there is one restaurant in, in the plaza that really could use a little boost. It's, it's Food Chow. I don't think they're experiencing the, the same admiration that the other restaurants are. So perhaps maybe we could drop in there and maybe grab a little soup or something. Also, I wanted to thank Donna Brown. She hosted Movies in the Maze and I just, I just think she's a wonderful woman. All the hard work that it takes to pull that off, week after week. And she, she needs to be commended for that. So thank you very much to Donna. And also I just want to say that, you know, the Honorable Phil White, his family is always in our thoughts and prayers and we really miss him a lot. And Mr. Mayor, that's really all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Trustee Howell?
Yes, I'll get off mute. I wanted to start off tonight actually talking about mosquitoes. So we've had, you even probably, most of the residents know that by the time August rolled around, they were quite a nuisance. And we have gotten some complaints. I wanted people to know that as, in response to those complaints, the DPW did get the county to drop anti-mosquito pellets in the catch basins near Maple Avenue on August 18th. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem to have provided the relief for those residents in that area. And I wanted to remember people that last year, the county had distributed minnows which our DPW actually participated, painted in that program for several years. The minnows eat the larva of mosquito. We have a big standing body of water in what used to be the old quarry that's left between Marble Dale and Young Place. But the county seems to have taken away those programs. So I'm going to, in the second half of this year, after the election passes, come to the new board and ask if we can work with the county government to see if they can keep these programs in place. There's a couple of, one very real, real important reason why we have to keep on mosquito control. I think we dodged a bullet the last time with a potential pandemic with Zika. And so mosquito control is really important from that reason, too. The County Board did have a mosquito, a group who was charged with mosquito surveillance. So I really think we have to go back and it, it doesn't make any sense for this to fall on an individual village or town because you really need to treat the whole surrounding area. So, so I really think this is something that we need to push on the county on. It's an important health issue. Wanted to thank everybody who's helping with the Tuckahoe Challenge Virtual Road Race this year. It is still going on and you can still sign up. You have till September 20th. I wanted to thank everybody for their support so far. Thank my fellow board members, Mary Louisi, Stevie and Trustee Andino for joining us. And I want to especially thank the Raffiani family, who's the owner. I want to thank Jeff Zuckerman, Claire Gorman and Sophia Chiapetta for volunteering and helping distribute our premium, which was a really great gator with the Tuckahoe symbol on it. So please continue to, to sign up and I'll report on the final output in next month's meeting. As Mr. Burke mentioned, the census is going on. I wanted to thank two members of the Eastchester community, Donato Vicaro and Joy Greenwich, who along with myself are members of the Eastchester Census Committee. We actually were able to sit out and get a couple more people registered from Tuckahoe at the farmer's market this weekend. And it was really a learning process to understand why people are hesitant to sign up for the census. So I wanted to thank the committee for supporting that effort and thank those two individuals for, for their time. There's a lot of interesting stuff going on, planning and zoning. So we voted on that measure this evening. And what this will allow is the hotel to get its permanent certificate of occupancy. So that is really exciting. I want to thank Gary Yurton and David Burke for the, you know, Herculean effort to get that deal agreement made. And so now we're on to the restaurant shell, which I'm sure some of you have been watching it become formed. The idea is to get it into a certain place where the developer can then look for a customer. So as far as we know, there's nobody there yet, but that'll be, you know, next on our list of, of projects we'd like to see moved along. We have quite a lot of things going on in planning and zoning, but I just wanted to bring one Tuckahoe issue forward, and that is an interesting public hearing that is now open on 69 Main Street and 22 Underhill. So the current 69 Main Street is the Masonic Building where there's a doctor's office and, you know, request is made to expand doctor's offices. As part of that expansion, you need to have enough parking spaces to accommodate patients. And so what they are proposing is, I believe they've actually purchased the lot or the property on 22 Underhill, which now has a house on it. They're proposing to demolish that house and turn it into a parking space. Part of, some of the considerations may be to actually switch the parcel of land between the Cameron lot, which we own, and this 22 Underhill lot, which would become a paved parking. So that would, that would actually have to come before the Village Board. So it's, as I said, it's an interesting proposal that is now before both planning and zoning. And there's a, an open public hearing on the zoning board. People from the, you know, who are interested in village history, since that's a Masonic building, you know, may want to look into that as well. And Gary, correct me if I said anything that wasn't right.
No, you're right on.
Right. Another really interesting planning issue and zoning issue is not in our village, but right next to it. It is the property at 21 Scarsdale Road, which houses currently the Sterling Bank. They're going to, there's a proposal before the Yonkers Planning and zoning boards to convert that to medical office buildings. And while, you know, that's on the periphery of Yonkers, for us, it, it would really be a significant change. You know, rather than a nine-to-five bank office, this would, you know, we have no idea of what the hours are gonna be of a medical office building. It will have ambulatory care services. They've, we've had our consultants look at the traffic study that was done and they've made a lot of really good suggestions and comments. We also don't know who the owner is, so there's a lot of, a lot of things we don't know, a lot of things that haven't been explained. And fortunately, the way the Yonkers code is set up, they don't have to hold a public hearing on this matter. So even though our, our village submitted a memo asking to address some of these issues, their board voted this week to move forward on this. So I know, David, I don't know if you want to comment, if you met today and feedback on that?
Just a real quick, we did, we had a very short meeting today and they admitted that they barely looked at our memo. They were not ready for our meeting and to be quite honest, I was pretty frustrated with them. And I gave them till either tomorrow or Wednesday to set up a brand-new meeting and have them kind of review our memo in detail and how they're gonna respond to it. But unfortunately, to get it on their radar and to, to see the city of Yonkers see our concerns, it's been, it's been kind of a frustrating experience. So a little bit of a lesson learned, but we're not, you know, it's not dead yet. We're gonna, we're still have some concerns. They still have a lot to do in regards to the project, even though it has been approved. So some conditions still in their resolutions that they need to look at. Some of the traffic stuff they still need to look at. So we're still gonna stay on it and in the next couple of days, we're gonna re-meet and hopefully have a better discussion.
Right, so would we be able to post the memo that we sent to their planning board on our website?
Sure.
Yeah. And, you know, I would encourage residents who are concerned about this to contact the planning and zoning boards in Yonkers. Letters, emails, phone calls would be encouraged. And so lastly, I just wanted to make a few comments. We've talked a lot about criminal justice reform tonight, so that is definitely, you know, been a hot-button topic around here. And I wanted to thank, you know, Senator Mayor and Assemblywoman Pauline for coming in. We are really fortunate to have such two hard-working individuals who are willing to come in, sit down, not only listen, but go back and, and create change, create progress. You know, we had an interesting Facebook post from the police department, which I commented on, and I don't want to really say too much about it, but I wanted to encourage people, if they want to know, you know, why it was taken down, I would encourage you, as I always do, to talk to Chief Costanza. I discussed the matter with him personally and he was very supportive. And, you know, it's something that I value a lot, being able to talk to the chief. But I also was able to explain why I felt I needed to comment on that post. Recently, there's been a lot of inflammatory letters about this kind of topic. So I, I just want to say that, you know, what we do when we have to, you know, as a municipality, work with the state on laws and the state and local municipalities, you know, they have a lot of reliance on each other, not only for legal and legislative matters, but also financial. So we have to be able to, in a productive way, you know, bring up problems so that we can move through them. We have legislation as our tool to do that and that's what we use in a democracy to do that. So I encourage us to keep doing that, rather than try to scare people with one or two cases. We have the ability with the committee that Chief Costanza has proposed to not only learn more about what the police do, but to be able to sit down as a community with the board, with residents and the police and learn and educate ourselves about these laws because they're complex. Criminal justice reform is very complex and it takes a bit of time and effort to understand and hard work. So I am looking forward to that committee. I'm looking forward to working with the police. If we don't have the police there to help us with their insight and their knowledge, which is both deep and broad on this subject, we will sink. So I'm looking forward to that. And as I said, it's hard work. You need people who are willing to sit down at the table, listen to each other and compromise. And I have every faith that our police and our residents are ready for that. And I know that the village residents will make sure that people who are sitting in the seats next month as trustees will be people who can carry that through. So go out and vote, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, this, yeah, this is Steve Alfassi, if I can make a comment.
Hold on, Steve, this is, we're doing the trustee reports at this time.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize.
Trustee Lee?
Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well. I have just a few things. Talk about our Tuckahoe seniors. Jennifer Vetrimal continues to keep our Tuckahoe seniors engaged via Zoom by doing her members' connect meetings, bingo, Tai Chi and other chair exercises. Second, our kids have returned back to school. It's been a bit of adjustment, but it seems that the kids are doing great. Our Tuckahoe Superintendent Amy Goodman, administration and staff have been doing a fabulous job and we, as parents, are extremely grateful. And I hear Eastchester is very happy as well. Speaking of our children, like the chief had mentioned earlier, Chief Costanzo, Chief Fonsi, Chief Satrielli have always been very diligent about putting our reminders to please watch out for our children. All lanes of traffic must stop for school bus, for school bus who has activated their lights. Please watch out for our children crossing the streets. Please remind your teenage drivers as well, because that seems to be an issue. That's my observation. Lastly, I hope everybody's been enjoying our, the outdoor dining. Please continue to support our local businesses and shops. And like we said earlier in the meeting, outdoor dining will be extended until November 8th. So that's it for me. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Trustee Lee. Trustee Andino?
Well, I, you know, I, I wanted to, well, I wasn't sure if I wanted to talk about this.
Holy shit.
Somebody needs to mute.
Yeah.
I, I've been asked a couple of times what my stance is on the police department. People have, have questioned whether or not I support the police. And I thought that it would be appropriate at a meeting where it's recorded and there are residents, you know, in the meeting to hear from me that I do support the police. I think sometimes people confuse supporting the police with no accountability. And I think that it's important for, for us as elected officials to support our police, to make sure that they have the resources that they need, to make sure that they have solutions to, to obstacles in fulfilling their role as police and to thanking them for the work that they do. What I'm not is a cheerleader. And I think people take it the wrong way if we think that there should be accountability. And I think that not in our department, but in other departments, things have gone astray when there was no accountability, when no one wanted to ask a question because they were afraid to be deemed as anti-police. The chief and I have had many conversations, you know, we had one today. We're always able to, to talk to each other about what our differences might be and agree on some things. And I support the police. But I also am responsible as an elected official to ensure that we ask the questions that are needed to ask. So that's my position. And I wanted to make sure that the residents knew I support the police. I've spoken to our police department detectives, a few of them, and to let them know and to ask them, do you feel that I do support you, and to hear from them and have a conversation. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And I think that the chief is clear on that, and so is the police department. So that's, that's what I wanted to, to let everyone know.
Thank you. Well, I will, well, it looks like I'm going to be telling the Cliff Notes version here. But I really, I thank my, the trustees that pretty much everyone touched on something that I wanted to say. So I'm not going to reiterate that, other than to say, I would just like to thank our building department, you know, our code enforcement officer, Mike Semenara, for assisting in validating the gyms that are now opened up in the village. It was something that we partnered with the county to assist them in expediting these gyms being open. So I thank our building department for getting that done. And yes, as we said earlier, please continue to patronize our local businesses. You know, it's going to be interesting to see where this, where this pandemic goes now that we see the schools are opening and obviously, you know, some of the professional sports leagues are now allowing their fans in. So, you know, we're just not out of the woods yet. So it'll be interesting to see what's going to develop in the fall. I believe September 25th, our veterans here in, in Tuckahoe will be commemorating Gold Star Mothers' Day at the Eastchester Monument, located on Route 22 on September 25th. I am, the date, the, the time, I believe, will be at 10:00 AM or 11:00 AM, but I will get clarification for you on that, and we will have that posted on our village website. That will be September 25th. And lastly, I am back to holding the virtual mayor's meeting every Wednesday via Zoom, beginning at 10:00 AM. Feel free to stop in, say anything you would like to say. We'll have a conversation about whatever you'd like to talk about. If that is not suitable, then please email me or call me. And if you're comfortable, we can also arrange socially safe distance meeting if you'd like. And that's all I have. I continue, please, everyone to be safe. Just look around the rest of the country, look how they're doing, and look how New York is doing. And yes, today's conference call with the county, there was one COVID-related fatality last evening, which was the first one in over two weeks, which is, again, for the first, for the family that lost their loved one, it's, that's, doesn't sit well with them. But when you look at what we have gone through in the last few months, it's pretty, it's incredible that only that one fatality in the last two weeks.
Where, where was it, Mayor?
I, that, they don't tell us. Information, we don't know. And as, as of today, over 60% of the county has been tested for COVID with a less than 4% positive rate, which is something that they, that's what they're looking to achieve with these type of numbers. So let's just keep up what we're doing. And with that, I'm going to, this will be the second opportunity for anyone to address the board on any issue. Anyone?
Hello? Yep, Mr. Mayor, Steve Alfassi.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Steve Alfassi. I just wanted to point out, and I know State Senator Shelley Mayer, and I certainly know our legislator as well, Amy Paulin, very, very well. I've worked with them in the past. I didn't want to interrupt them. But I do have to say about bail reform, I've been prosecuting cases for the last two years in Yonkers. Those are misdemeanors envelope, okay? Bail reform was, went ahead and was enacted in the state without any input from the Police Chiefs Association, without any input from the prosecutors associations throughout, throughout the state of New York, and without any input from the judges from the state of New York. That's a fact. It's undisputable. In fact, it's been, by many in legislature, acknowledged, including by the governor. Now, they knew, okay, they found out there was many, many problems with this. And by the way, bail reform was enacted not so much for the problems in the other 60, I'm sorry, 57 counties, but there was problems in New York City when it came to people accused of crimes being put away in jail and for minor offenses, I agree with that, and not getting representation and not being able to put up bail. In the other 57 counties, it was not a problem. So this went into effect because of the legislature from New York City and of the legislature throughout the state agreeing with it. It was ill-advised, it was ill-conceived, and it was not thought of well. After it went into effect is when they realized all the problems that we have. And now we want to go ahead and include the police chiefs, include the prosecutors, include the judges on reform. So the horse is out of the barn. We're correcting a mess that happened because the legislature acted without input from those who do it on a daily basis. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Alfassi. Anyone else here in the room would like to comment?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. And I appreciate Mr. Alfassi's position on bail reform. As an ordained minister and as a former law enforcement officer, the issue of bail reform is something that was sorely needed. How they got to it and how it was enacted, that can be debated. But to, to...
I don't think it's debatable, but go ahead.
To put forth, you know, commentary that suggests that, you know, this, this was somehow not well thought out or not, I mean, the fact of the matter is that people were languishing beyond New York City, beyond New York City, even in Westchester County. Folks were remaining incarcerated for long periods of time, awaiting their trial, not having their attorneys have access to discovery. These are draconian methods that were employed by more, three other states, three other states aside from New York, Wyoming, South Carolina, and New York, were the only three states that did not allow attorneys to have access to discovery. There are 10 other things that had...
I did not say anything about discovery, Rob.
But the issue is, is that people were languishing in jail without having had their cases heard. So the, and disproportionately, they were black and brown people. So the issue of bail reform is really a, a, a black and brown issue. And, and, and to use it as a political football or to politicize the issue does not help any community. I met with Gina Lee and others who were running last time, who said they wanted to bring this community together. And, and, and I was in support of unity. I don't see unity in this, in this village. I see a lot of hostility. I see a lot of disparate treatment. I was a former law enforcement officer. I honored the police in this church. I would have expected to have an invitation to a Back the Blue rally. I didn't get one. So I'm seeing a lot of separation.
Let me interrupt you right there. No, not a single person, I didn't get an invitation either. Well, no, no, no elected official got an invitation. There were not invitations sent out. No, 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 no. You just made a statement that you weren't invited, right? No one was invited, sir.
Mr. Alfassi, there were certainly people invited, and they're in this room right now.
What was that, a written invitation? What, what type of invitation are you talking about?
That, that, that is an aside. That is an aside.
No, you're making a, no, you're making a...
The issue is, the issue is...
Correct, it's not.
I did not interrupt you once.
Go ahead.
The issue is, is that when we're talking, we're throwing around buzzwords like unity. And when we throw around ideas like, you know, we want to bring people together, we don't particularly agree with the direction of the country, but, you know, we, we see evidence of the contrary. The fact of the matter is, is that we have to be responsible for both what we say and what we do. And, and on the issue of bail reform itself, to act as if bail reform is not this political wedge issue that's, that's driving apart our community and not bringing our, our community together is highly, is highly offensive to me. That, that's what I want to say.
But I, and I have to comment on that, and I appreciate it, and I, and you're right, and I apologize for interrupting. But when you say it's not politicization, where do we talk about then bail reform? Do we talk about it in our homes? We have to talk about it in a political setting, don't we? Hello? Did you get your comment? I don't know.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, if I may, I appreciate what this conversation, what I'm hearing, but I do not believe this is the place for this conversation right now. This is a village board meeting. So the back and forth, that's, that's all well and good. I think you guys exchanged ideas. I appreciate that. But if there's anyone else here in the room that would like to say something, please, at this opportunity, take this opportunity.
Ah, yes, I'd like to, I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir.
Nipples Neighbor, 108 Sagamore Road. First, as a current teacher in Yonkers and understanding the challenges that we faced in our reopening, I want to send my appreciation to the Tuckahoe teachers, administrators, and staff for adjusting to teaching during this pandemic. I know it isn't easy, but thank you for the work that they're doing. Now, full disclosure, I am the chairman of the Tuckahoe Democratic Committee. About a year ago, I came up here and asked the board to help me facilitate a voter form in future elections because I haven't had any luck in facilitating it with my Republican counterpart. Former Mayor Eklund then spoke and said that in the last, in the past, the League of Women Voters would moderate it, and both parties would help facilitate it. Fair enough, but that's exactly what I did the previous year. So again, before this March election, I asked the Republicans to have a voter form and even told them that they could pick anyone they want to moderate it. I have all the confidence that the Democratic candidates can answer any question. Again, the other side refused. So then with the election being postponed due to COVID and candidates not allowed to knock on doors and speak to residents, it was more important than ever to have a voter form. I again reached out to the League of Women Voters, who were ready and willing to moderate a voter form. And then they reached out to the Republican Committee and the Republican candidates and didn't even get a response from them. Not sure what the resistance is to taking questions from the public, but it would be more, excuse me, would be more productive than the divisive letters that are dropped on people's doorsteps. Most municipalities have voter forms, and I hope that next year, we'll be able to do the same so that the residents can get a clear understanding of who the candidates are and what their plan is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, are we supposed to be talking about any campaign or...
It is an opportunity for the public to say, it's an opportunity for the public to address the board on any issue that they feel is, is necessary to be addressed. Yes. Okay, anyone else in the room? Well, with that being said, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
A second.
All right, Tuckahoe, we'll see you October 5th. Have a good evening, everyone.